The sale of the bonds was conducted on August 9th, and the bond funds were delivered to the district on August 30th. And if you'll turn with me inside the very first tab, have a real quick just summary on the tab. The bonds were structured as 30-year serial bonds, and have interest payments on February 15th and August 15th. The bonds are rated AA by S&amp;P, along with S&amp;P's AAA due to the permanent school fund guarantee. The district's rating by Fitch is AA+, along with the AAA by virtue of the permanent school fund guarantee there as well. The underwriters on this transaction, the senior managers was Bank of America, along with the co-managing underwriters of BOK Financial, Frost Bank, Raymond James, and Wells Fargo. And the district sold all $198 million of its voted authorization for the completion of the reconstruction of John Tyler and Rockford High Schools. If you'll turn over to page number five, we'll just kind of do a breakdown real quick of the sources and uses of funds. When we actually look at the principal amount or par value of this bond sale, it's actually, the actual principal value of this bond sale was $175,735,000. The remainder of the proceeds were made up by premium paid by the investors to the tune of $23,666,604.55. All $198 million of the voted amount, the $198 million voted amount, was put into the district's project bond. And the interest rates on the bond, the all NTIC for the bond was a 3.525%, but that's when we look at all the total cost of issuance, as well as having to figure in the call features on the bonds. These bonds actually can be called on August 15th, 2027. That figures into the price, allowing you to refinance or early repay these bonds like you have done with previous bonds up in the district. When we look at just the R yield on the bond, it was a 2.79%. So we're talking about 30-year fixed rate bonds at very, very low interest rates. So it's a very, very good result. If we turn over to the second tab, the second tab just includes a preliminary tax rate impact analysis. That preliminary tax rate impact analysis just goes towards proving up that due to the structure of the bonds, the interest rate received, the district's current financial condition and bond portfolio, we're going to be able to meet the promise made to the voters so that this bond issue should only impact the tax rate by a total of 3 cents. And then if we turn to tab four, we kind of get a look at the current, we do a look at the current bondholders of the district. That's on page 14. And what you'll see if you look at the top two or three or four bondholders in the district, Traveler, State Farm, Bessemer, Pioneer, those are some of the largest holders of PSF bonds all across the state of Texas. And they are well represented with Tyler IED bonds. And so it's a great testament to the district's financial condition, the economy here in the city of Tyler, that those institutions are also buyers of Tyler IED bonds. And if you look over here on the far right of page number 14, you see the list of the actual investors that participated in the Series 2017 bonds. These are presented in more of an alphabetical order, not necessarily by the amount purchased. Like, for instance, you'll see State Farm Insurance Company on there. State Farm was a purchaser of approximately $55 billion of these bonds. And they don't participate in every bond issue here in the state of Texas. They only participate in those with very, very high credit quality and nice debt ratios. We had a similar deal in the market that day. State Farm did not participate in their transaction. They lacked your transaction. And their participation helps to achieve lower interest rates because it drives up demand for the bonds. Another thing that we're excited about is to see in terms of some of the investors here in this bond issues. We see local banks, Southside Bank participated and placed orders for these bonds. And we also know that we had local retail orders place for these bonds. And that is part of, that was one of the district's wishes is that we make the bonds potentially available for local investors. And they have this place in the paper. So. The next few tabs in here just include the big final pricing numbers packet that we put together, along with the rating agency documents from Fitch and Standard and Poor's. I'm not going to go through those documents, but they're great for you to review. The rating agencies have a very good praise for the district, its economy, and the finances that you guys take very good care of as custodians of local tax dollars. So we're very excited about the results. Congratulations to the district, and we look forward to seeing these two projects completed. Any questions?
Questions for us?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
So the impact on the tax rate was the forecasted 3 cents that we've talked about in advance of the election. Remember, we had estimates for what we thought, how we thought the bonds would be priced, what the interest rate would be leading up to the election. Seeing to remember those as conservative, how did we fare compared to what we presented to the public in advance of the election?
The interest rate is a little lower than what we presented in advance of, in advance of the election. I would say probably 1/2 of a percent lower than what we presented before the election.
1/2, 500 basis points?
1/2 of a percent, 50 basis points.
Okay. Any other questions? Appreciate your update.
Thank you, guys. Good to see you all.
Next, item 10, Lone Star Governance and Continuous Improvement. For the audience, this is part of our effort to make student achievement and goals that we've set for the district to improve student achievement a top priority in our meetings. And so we move these discussions to the very front of the meeting. So today, we're going to talk about Goal 2.2, Advanced Placement Program.
Mr. President, we have Gary Brown, Executive Director of College and Career, that will provide us the, I guess, the end of the year 1617 performance that we have. As y'all know, to reiterate what you just told the public, last year, we were participating in Lone Star Governance Training. We've been participating with fidelity ever since then. So today is a great way to celebrate some of the success we've had as far as advanced placement goes, and to a credit for this, Gary.
Mr. President, Dr. Crawford, trustees, thank you for the opportunity to present some information regarding our advanced placement programming. The outline of the presentation, as mentioned previously, Goal 2.2, specifically addresses completion, participation, and performance in advanced academics classes. The two primary areas that I'm going to focus on in this report are going to be AP or Advanced Placement classes and the dual credit classes. Just to outline, we're going to look at 11th and 12th grade students' participation, separate from 10th grade, and let me explain why, so you'll understand where we're headed with this. The, try to compare apples to apples. That is typically where the dual credit program comes into play with 11th and 12th graders. So if we're going to compare AP's participation, we need to do that with the dual credit as well. The performance versus participation, this next slide is specifically related to performance. So we're looking at, and this is some information that you've seen, just to compare AP scores in advanced placement classes. The growth that we saw, 32 more students who took an AP exam, these are students that actually took the time in May to take the exam. Then you're looking at the number of students increased that scored at the 3, 4, 5 level, an increase there, and then a percentage increase overall of the students that passed at that level of 3+. So that's just looking at AP performance specifically. When you look at that, and you can talk about district goal 2, progress measure 2, the Texas Academic Performance Report, the TAPER Report, is going to be issued. The final report comes out in November. So we don't quite have those numbers yet, but when it is issued in November, that's where the baseline number was established. Last year, our target number of 3% growth in students completing two or more advanced placement our dual credit courses to 41.8% is our target number for this year. So really what we've been looking at and focusing on and concentrating on, and a lot of credit has to go to the counselors and the teachers and administrative staffs on our high school campuses, early college, John Tyler, Rockford Lee, to make sure, because we have to have the participation in order to get the performance. They go hand in hand. And so that target is what we're looking at when we get those final numbers. These that you have in your presentation, once again, apples to apples, our upperclassmen, 11th and 12th grade students throughout the district, these are all combined, all in. Our advanced placement numbers show, this is a three-year set of data, 832 students participated in advanced placement courses in the fall of 2015, and I'm trying to compare it at the same time each year. Fall of 2016, 839 students, there was a little bit of growth, but really pretty stagnant. And then as of, and these numbers were run during the second week of classes, so that there could be a little bit of fluctuation there. But we're pretty steady, we're going to be about 900 in the AP classes. And the dual credit enrollment, and that's where you see some pretty good growth, once again, going back three years, 298 to 315, to right now, and actually that number is probably going to be a little bit higher. 431 students as of the second week of school. This is just a visualization of the growth as far as on a bar graph, 2015, 2016, and 2017. I think what I would point out, as you're looking at the growth in the two programs, is the fact that the dual credit program is very quickly, in this past year, the actual numbers have it, it's almost half the numbers that are participating in the AP program. So it's actually growing even faster than our AP program, the dual credit program is. So you see, and just reflecting back to the slides, 431 students at top lot-lead graph participating in dual credit, and just a little over 900 that are participating in the advanced placement classes. And like I mentioned at the beginning, the 10th graders we pulled out, because that's typically not a grade level where students will be participating in the dual credit program, but still want to show some growth in there because there are some things that are happening, academic dual credit and technical dual credit, that are showing growth in dual credit as well. So if you look at the 10th graders in AP, and I don't even have the freshmen included, we do offer freshman AP and geography class. We do not offer an equivalent right now, dual credit for freshmen, so that's why I didn't include that particular number. For our AP, 195 at the 10th grade level to 240. So now, as we started school in the fall of 2017, 326 students taking AP classes. And the dual credit number has grown significantly this fall, this sophomore. And this is just taking a look at the 10th grade students. Once again, you notice the fact that growth in both areas were particularly in dual credit. New for 2017, '18, in some areas, why you've seen some growth, we're trying to look at additional programming. And so this year, these are new, these are things that we did not offer in the 2016, 2017 school year. So as you look at the list, in the AP, Advanced Placement area, you have Environmental Science being offered at John Tyler High School, European History at Robert E. Lee High School, Music Theory at Robert E. Lee, World History has been added into the curriculum at John Tyler. And in the area of dual credit, this is the number one area, and I would emphasize this math, and you see it there in number five, six, and seven. Two years ago, we did not offer dual credit math in Tyler at all. Last year was called the pilot at the beginning. We wanted us to see gauge interest of students and success of students. And now we're offering in both campuses, and have seen the greatest amount of growth in the area of dual credit math. So you see dual credit statistics at John Tyler and Robert E. Lee. This year, dual credit pre-calculus was added this year to Robert E. Lee, with plans to move that over to John Tyler next year. And then we've added dual credit college algebra to John Tyler. And in addition to this, I would just add one more thing on this slide. But as you look ahead, two courses that we'll be offering will be gauging interest of students in November when they're in course selections. Looking specifically at AP, Computer Science is an area we feel like there's a lot of interest and we'll see that program grow. And this is one that's definitely going to happen. Our articulation and agreement with Tyler Junior College, Medical Terminology. There's several hundred students in the Health Sciences, ready to take Medical Terminology, that will enter that and take that as a dual credit class in the spring. They do not show and do not reflect in these numbers. So that's going to be a spring before we get to next year or finish that. And then I just wrap up, once again, I say just really thanking the teachers and the counselors and administrators for the concerted effort and the focus on advanced academics. We know that we need students to take one class, and support them, and help them be successful in that one class, the challenge is to take that second and that third. And we really are seeing some good growth.
Questions?
As I said to you when I came over to you, I am so excited to see the increase in the numbers. What we should all be about and focusing on is the academic achievement and the high level raising of our students' level in all of these AP and pre-AP courses. So I too commend you, but also commend the teachers who are there in the day-to-day process and the campus-level administrators. And this is what, these are things we ought to be just joyful about and see more of as a year's progress. Thank you so much.
Comments, questions?
Mr. Brown, thank you for your leadership in this area. You've made a tremendous impact in a relatively short period of time. Thank you very much. One of our challenges is how do we continue to improve the performance of all students? And you have a bull's eye on you in terms of how some of the most talented kids in the district are doing, so thank you. Item B is consideration of approval of district improvement plans, campus improvement plans.
In your packet, we have our annual approval of these improvement plans. Second year in a row, I'm looking at our principals and our assistant superintendents and saying we would like to have these to our board before the school year starts next year. This is actually better than two years ago, better than three years ago. So we're hoping that we'll actually have that to y'all before the actual school year starts. But this is not out of the ordinary for school districts. Sometimes it's until Christmas until these things are actually presented to the school board. So we do, we had, we've had a great run the last three years, from 11 to 9, to 3, to now 2 low-performing campuses. And a lot of it has been done through targeted support for students and campuses. So we have that in your packet. I don't know if y'all want to go through every one of those tonight. 27-plus campuses, we're welcome. We have a good audience here tonight to do that. So if you have any questions that I can answer at this time, or maybe the school improvement officer, perhaps a principal, will let them provide that opportunity at this time. But if you have any questions with depth, feel free to call myself, and I'll get you in touch with the right person.
Any desire to review a particular plan?
No, sir, but I have a request. The next time we present these, is it possible for you to also have a legend following the acronym? Would appreciate it.
Better principal. Okay, so I think we'd be making motion to approve both the district's plans, the campus plans, as well as the planning process. So a second for that?
I'll say it.
Our vice impeachant to it?
I'll say it.
All the favors, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that moves us to item number 11, 30 minutes of public participation. That'll be kind of the standard policy language, and then we'll get started. Renaming the schedule time in our agenda for public comment and the board wishes to hear your thoughts and concerns. As per our policy, all speakers must have submitted a speaker participation form at least 10 minutes prior to the start of our regular session. All registered speakers should have received our guidelines for your presentation. We also ask those in the audience who are afraid from responding to the speaker's comments, including cheering and applauding. This will enable the board members to focus their attention entirely on the speaker. Although the board may ask clarifying questions, please be reminded, board members cannot respond to any comments. Tonight, we have, light night, only 14 of you. We went through this real last time, but there's 42. I can either do the full five-minute speech or stay within our 30-minute guideline. And that's what I'm choosing to do tonight. So that leaves two minutes per speaker. And I will do my best to give you about 15 seconds warning, and then ask that when I call the time in two minutes, that you stop talking. Now, I'll end the tour log briefly. The last time we had a public meeting like this, proud, played by the rules, and we were going to show the community and anybody else outside of the community watching how to have a constructive and helpful conversation about sensitive items. My prayer and hope then was that Tyler would lead by example that way. And the folks from the last meeting had the first opportunity to do that. You now have a second opportunity to do that. And then the board itself later, tonight's meeting, will have a third opportunity to do that. So I will call out the name, and also call out the person who is next up after that, so that that person can be ready to speak, so we can move quickly along. First up, and I'm apologizing in advance for uttering some of these names, Wes Belberdine, and then Ashton Orvets will be up next. Wes?
Mr. B, if I can make it easy. Thank you, and good evening, trustees. It is an honor to appear again before the board. I sincerely appreciate it, I think everyone here does, the courtesy and attention you have shown to all perspectives as we discuss regaining our high schools. I respectfully offer three practical reasons why it is in Tyler's interest to rename both high schools currently named after leaders of the Confederacy. The first reason is good business. Tyler Chamber of Commerce, the Tyler City Council, the Tyler Economic Development Council work hard to bring new businesses to Tyler to bring jobs and growth. We should not put our city leaders and representatives in a position where they must explain and apologize to national and international companies why the children of their executives and managers will be required to attend public schools named after leaders of the Confederacy. Those companies may decide to look elsewhere for communities more hospitable to their employees and their executives. The second reason is good messaging. Renaming the schools will demonstrate to business leaders and to companies seeking to relocate jobs, that Tyler is not stuck in the 1950s. It is a vibrant, orbit-looking community, and this is true. And that is a message we should send. The third reason is good publicity. Tyler does not want to be the last town to leave the Confederacy behind. By setting this issue for discussion, you have now set renaming in motion, and quite correctly. If you decide next to keep the names as they are, and by doing so, to continue to require students to attend schools named for Confederate leaders, there will be adverse publicity, that is, that there is still one southern town in East Texas unwilling to part with the Confederacy. So while Columbia, Charlottesville, Dallas, and even New Orleans are able to shed their Confederate ties, Tyler will be known in ridicule as a town that would not. By contrast, we can obtain good publicity by changing the school's names.
15 seconds.
Sir, thank you for the opportunity to present today. Thank you.
Ashton Orvets, followed by Bobby Curtis.
Thank you for your time. I urge you to not change the name of Robert in the high school. I think George Orwell put it right. The best way to destroy people is to destroy their history. Robert E. Lee was a great gentleman, he had a good character, both North and South. After the war, he prevented a Southern guerrilla movement by himself. He was spoken of well by the people of both North and South after the war. I think if you're going to change it, and I agree with the speaker, which I don't agree with most of what he said, you have to change John Tyler to... John Tyler was a Virginia slave owner, member of Confederate Congress. He is not a person of good character, if you've read it. He's not a role model or anything. The only reason we're named after him is because he put Texas in in 1845 as a slave state to keep control of the US Congress to make sure that the slave states had more votes than the North state. The, if you're talking to the DISD like your president speaker was, they're going to change names of Confederate generals, but they're also changing names, other names. They're probably going to change the name of, get this down here so I can read it, sorry, James Booty, James Hogg, we have Hogg, John Reagan, Madison, James Madison, Benjamin Franklin, Thomas Jefferson, Stephen C. Foster, Sam Houston, William B. Travis are amongst those that are probably also going to change. The DISD board said, and if we're going to do this and not be hypocrites, we have to change all names that have to do with the Confederacy.
Can you sign it, sir?
Thank you. I urge you to not do anything. I think it's best for the long-range Tyler thing. But the worst thing you could do is just rename Robert Lee and not rename the others.
Mr. Bobby Curtis, followed by Ashley Smallwood.
Good evening. My name's Bobby Curtis, my second time here, I'll be quick. Can't tell you how many phone calls I got from friends, "Are you going to the meeting?" I said yes, and you're invited to, but they stayed home. Contrary to what the gentleman said, of people moving to Tyler, I've been part of Tyler Economic Development since over 20 years. Never, as a company interested in Tyler, were they worried about the name of the school? They were worried about the look and the shape of the schools, but not the names. I wish we were not even discussing this subject. A gentleman who is not a Tylerite, who's not a Texan, got this started. If I didn't know better, I would think he was paid to do this, just to stir this up. We're a town, never had any of this kind of decision. And we're too big a town and too good a people to get sidetracked on something like this. It's just a big difference. We need to go on with business, y'all need to go on educating our children, grandchildren, whatever, but leave everything alone. You had a great turnout on the bond. I assured you, if this thing went the other way and the bond was held again, you would be soundly defeated. That's how much opposition you have with what's taking place here. Leave everything alone. Lee was a good man. He made a poor choice, but he born and raised in Virginia.
Can you sign this, sir?
Y'all are good people. Please make the right decision for this community. We won't catch any flak from the national media about it. Thank you, y'all.
Ashley Smallwood, followed by Dr. Scott Hager.
My name is Ashley Smallwood, and I am a sophomore at Robert E. Lee. No one has asked us, the students, how we feel about the name change. This is something that adults decide for political reasons. There is no oppression or segregation on our campus. Please come to our school and look for yourself. We need a name, if, we don't need a name, wait, sorry. We don't need a name change, but we do need supplies for our campus. There is not enough copy paper for the teachers. There are six of us in my fellow journalism class that don't have computers because there aren't enough to go around, which makes it hard for me to do my assignment along with the six others. I'm assuming that the name change that we don't need is going to cost money. And there's a lot more useful things we could use for that money for. If anyone decides, if anyone decides that there should be a name change, it should be us, the students, at Robert E. Lee High School. If this continues, it will indeed cause segregation. Thank you.
Ashley Smallwood, Dr. Hager, followed by Mr. Charles Smart.
President Hager, Vice President Washington, Dr. Crawford, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. My name is Scott Eckert, I'm a proud TIC graduate, I attended Woods Harbor and Lee, class of 1995. This is not a hard commentary to have to give. I have not struggled coming to an opinion in this matter. Frankly, what I have struggled the most with these last eight years since moving back to Tyler has been reconciling my unwary support to IIST with my embarrassment and disappointment in having a high school still named after Robert E. Lee. This issue stopped being about the man generally a long time ago. It no longer matters how he personally felt about slavery, whether he did or did not own slaves, or how conflicted he might have been about the Civil War. His name, his image, and other vestiges of the Confederacy have been usurped by white supremacists and what they represent. supremacists and what they represent. I know none of you had anything to do with the naming of this school, but it is obvious that the spike in the number of schools named after Confederate leaders in the late 1950s was in direct response to Brown versus Board of Education's Supreme Court decision. When the federal government struck down segregated schools in 1954, just a few years later, Tyler built a high school in the white part of town and named it after the military leader of the Confederacy, a failed four-year movement to keep slavery legal. Named after a man with no ties to Tyler or even Texas, a thinking person can draw no other conclusion than that this was done out of racism and bigotry. But all of you have the chance to right this wrong. You will face criticism, and it will actually matter what you decide. You can be the board that continues the history of bigotry and injustice against our black friends and neighbors, or you can be the board that writes a new legacy for TISD. We have made such great strides for public education recently in Tyler. Please note that whatever you decide to do, TISD will always have my unwavering support, but I need you to speak here tonight out of conscience, and so that in 20 years from now, my three children, who all will attend Robert E. Lee, will know that their father, and hopefully this school board, was on the right side of history. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Eckert. Mr. Charles Smart, followed by my associate, Scott Ecker.
My name is Charles Smart, Garston, Anne Yu, Woods Haverden, Robert E. Lee, class of 81. First of all, is there any way to see how many students are around here versus parents in special interest?
Mr. Smart, the purpose of this portion of the...
I was just curious, Mr. Smart.
Is to address the board and not address the crowd, so if you correct the comments of the board, we would appreciate it.
What I heard about this, the first thing I thought about was a statement that says, "For those who don't study history and learn from it, are destined to make the same mistakes." The other one was, "The definition of insanity is continuing to do the same thing, make the same mistake over and over and over and over." That's what we're seeing all over our nation right now. Everybody's hitting the same thing over and over and over, and nobody's coming away with winner or the community closer together, and that's what we should be doing. Robert E. Lee was named later in 1953. I would hope there was no bad feelings or anything like that when they named it that way. The other, the other's high school named John Tyler. John Tyler was a member of the Confederate Senate. John Tyler had slaves and was not known to be very nice to his slaves. And as far as people being upset with the slave issue, I can completely understand, but the first person to bring slaves to the United States was a white man, and he forced them to work for him, and supposedly was not nice to them. My family was slaves, but my mother's family came home.
It's two minutes.
No warning.
I did give you a warning on the condition of...
Okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smart. Sonya Scarborough, followed by Dr. Nick Fisina.
Hi, members of the board. My name is Sonya Scarborough, and I just want to thank y'all for allowing me to speak. I am on the side of keeping the name the same. I feel like that our tax dollars would be better spent improving the education of TISD students. I cross paths with kids of all ages, including college age, on a weekly basis. I find that a large percentage lack basic reading, math, and writing skills, their historical knowledge is appalling. They also have very poor grammar skills. When you hear of remedial reading being taught on college campuses across America, it's hard not to notice that our education system is failing our students. I spent a large part of last month talking to every student and teacher that I could find. I asked them about the changing of the name of Robert E. Lee and how they felt about it. Students and teachers included blacks, whites, Hispanics, and Vietnamese. Not one person, not one student, not one teacher was for the name change. There's zero, not one. They also mentioned that one change that, they feel like that one change would just start a chain reaction of changes, including the town's name, street names, and of course, John Tyler High School too. Unnecessary expenses for all these changes, money best spent in other places in TISD. I'm told that new books are needed in the high schools, that they're falling apart. I just been told that from students, I don't know that myself. The kids specifically mentioned, though, that they had only heard their parents or other adults wanting the name changed. They don't want it changed, neither do I. I'm a 1981 graduate of Robert E. Lee. The people I've heard wanting it changed are, for the most part, people who've never attended RAL, out-of-town people, people who've lived here less than 20 years. I want to know if those people are willing to put their money towards these changes. I know that I don't want my tax dollars spent on it. As a matter of fact, from what I've learned and seen of high school graduates across this whole country, I want a refund on my school taxes. Let's focus on improving reading, writing, grammar, math, and history. Oh, is that it? Okay, well, thank you.
Mr. Nick Fisina, followed by Reverend K. Mass.
Trustees, thank you for the opportunity to address you once again. Earlier, you heard from the board, the district's financial advisor, he referred to you all as custodians of tax dollars, and in this situation, you have the opportunity to be custodians of the inspiration we provided our students. The name of a high school should be a universally inspiring name, and each of you have shown the leadership because you've earned the public's trust to be elected officials, and I'm confident that your leadership demonstrated in the past, your leadership demonstrated presently, and those fine and fine accomplishments that we've heard with student progress will lead you and guide you in the appropriate direction to continue that public trust and make the right decision for our students in the future. This issue was brought forward, and it's been community-driven. I pay taxes, even I'm a property owner, and I'm very proud of the students that we have, and I hope that you all demonstrate that leadership that I know you're capable of, and once we get past this, we can focus on closing the student achievement gap. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Reverend K. Mass, followed by Mr. Ronald Perdue.
Picking back upon the words of one of our presidents, Ronald Reagan, here we go. We've come here once again to encourage this body to consider changing the name of Robert E. Lee. It should be done. It's time for it to be done. Between 1900 and 1920, there were several statues made as a result of resurgence of the Ku Klux Klan. And from 1950 to 1970, schools after schools throughout the South were named for Confederate heroes. I'm a child of the South. I've lived in Tyler for 40 years. I never understood why the name is Robert E. Lee. It hurts when we go and we see this name. It would be the same if we had Jewish children at a school called Adolf Hitler High. It would hurt our white citizens if they went to a school called, oh, I don't know, Mount Pollock High School. Maybe the motto of the, the, the motto would be that, that blacks should control in some type of manner. It's not fair. We should all be together. We should live together as one. To do that is to correct past discriminations, past discriminations that has hurt our community. Now, I know some of us want to hold on to the name of Robert E. Lee. It holds a sentimental value, but history tells us sentiment and history are not the same thing. Again, change the name of Robert E. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Ronald Perdue, followed by Mr. Ron Leeson.
Appreciate y'all letting me come and speak before you today. I spoke about a month ago, and I have my same concerns today, but maybe I'll suggest my concerns in a different way. I was born in Tyler. I'm retired from the state of Texas. I have a degree from TJC, Stephen up Austin, and I represent concerned citizens throughout Tyler because I have a newsletter I've been publishing, and the results of my newsletter is, no one has asked that we change the name of Robert E. Lee. So you're not hearing from me, you're hearing from many other people. There would be thousands of students whose history would be removed. I have three kids that went to Lee. I don't want their history removed. I want them to refer back to the school of Robert E. Lee. You might as well burn your history books, change other names, statues, as other oppressive groups do to their citizens. I don't expect that y'all want to do that, but it sounded that way. Other areas of the country, even though the majority of citizens do not want to change, the powers that be change anyway, sometimes in the middle of night. That doesn't sound like America. Are you only acting today like you're listening to our concerns, or is this a farce and you're wasting our time? Is your mind already made up? Do not change the name of Robert E. Lee.
Fifteen seconds, sir.
If this name change was brought up before the bond election, like others have commented on, it probably would not have passed. I wouldn't have voted for it. A number of my neighbors would not have voted for it. I own many properties or a few properties here in Tyler. I wouldn't want my money going into Robert E. Lee. So why don't y'all just throw a pair of gloves and reject, reject the proposals that are trying to wreck the name for it?
Next up is Mr. Bob Ruhr, followed by Mr. Steven Russ. I'm sorry, I skipped one. You have to see, Ron Leeson is up next, followed then by Mr. Ron Ruhr.
I'll probably yield some time to the previous speaker. The last time I spoke to you, I ended by saying that we could surely find a more universal, inspiring figure to honor and recognize by naming our school after them. I still think that's the real argument. It would be possible to refute all of these other arguments. For instance, I know I'm not going to forget history if you change the name of the school. But we have a changing school composition, and we really have to work harder to make all of these new students who are coming be inspired by the people we choose to honor and name. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leeson. Mr. Bob Ruhr, followed by Mr. Steven Russ.
Happy Constitution Week, as we all should know. Yesterday was the 230th anniversary of the signing of the Constitution of the United States. To reinforce the importance of that signing, numerous laws have been passed in the 20th century to commemorate the Constitution. Most recently, in 2004, Congress added the requirement that each educational institution should hold an educational program on the week of September 17. If we look at what's happening in society today, heaven knows that we need a better understanding of our Constitution and our founding documents. Then perhaps we would know that we are not a democracy which all are doomed to failure, but a constitutional republic, that there is not a separation of church and state, but a protection of church from state, and that God, who is mentioned five times in the Declaration of Independence, is the only reason that for the first time in 6,000 years of recorded human history, God given unadmissible rights for recognizing for citizens who are the sovereigns of their government. And finally, that we were founded as a Christian nation with all 13 sovereign states recognizing Jesus Christ for Protestantism in the founding Constitution. Today, I called five schools, asked them when they were having their program on the Constitution because I wanted to attend. None of them knew what I was talking about. One of them mentioned that their social studies students studied the Constitution. I talked with the social studies director of the Texas Education Agency today, and he was unaware of these laws. Since it is the intent of the Texas and US legislatures that all citizens know their Constitution, I would like to know what you intend, when you intend to comply with the law's intent. Regarding the name change, if we burn, as the Nazis did, or destroy our history as this name change will do, we are doomed to repeat it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ruhr. Mr. Steven Russ, followed by Ms. Mary Goodson.
Thank you, Dr. Crawford, and I'd like to do a special thanks to President Reverend Fitzhager for his service recently in the hurricanes, and I appreciate that information. I'd like to recognize Mr. Burkefield. He's a trustee for my neighborhood, where I'm a taxpayer here. I also have grandchildren that will be going to Robert E. Lee, so I'll let you know a little bit more about where I'm coming from. I won't repeat my Texas history, but my last name is Russ, so there you are. I'm not here to erase history. I've talked to people on the street, and I've let them know, this is not about subtraction, this is about addition. I went through this in the 70s in Dallas. It was an interesting situation. That's when the busing started, and the name changed, the logo changed, the motto changed. My peers were actually positive about the changes. There were a few parents that did voice some concern about this, and I'm here to tell you, in the hallways with our newly-integrated students, it was a positive happening, and positive things came out of that. That's what I lived through. Then I moved to East Texas behind the pine curtain. I have to tell you, I was shocked. I was shocked to see the difference, even then, about the difference between Tyler and Dallas. What I'd like you to hear is that there are issues here that people do not freely feel to come forward and talk about. I can speak freely because I'm not dependent on you for my job or which grocers do I shop in, and I'm just telling you that I'm not under, you know, any pressure from anybody that's going to give me a job review about what I'm up here telling you to speak for. I feel like I could speak freely, and I thank you for the opportunity to be incorporated in your time tonight to do that. You can sweep this dirt under the rug one more time, but that's not going to be a solution to make it disappear. The opponents say that if you change this, you have to fix all the problems, but this is like saying, if you can't look at and fix one issue, you can't fix an issue. I think you can fix this issue and change the name. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Ms. Mary Goodson, our annual public speaker tonight.
Members of the board, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Mary Goodson. I was born and raised with Tyler and lived in Tyler almost my whole life. I attended Dixie Elementary, Boulder Junior High School, John Tyler High School, Tyler Junior College, and have eventually graduated from UT Tyler. We, my husband and I have raised three children in Tyler. Our two sons graduated from Robert E. Lee. Our daughter, elected, chose to go to John Tyler and is a proud graduate of John Tyler. So you can understand that during John Tyler Week, we had an interesting week, and we had to decide which side we sat on. My main concern, not only about the historical aspect of Robert E. Lee, is my tax money. We own several pieces of property in Tyler, and we pay taxes on that, and I've agreed with the others. If I had have chosen the choice again to vote on the bond election, I would have voted against it if this was only valid, as it is now. If we change the name, the money that's going to be spent on the name change for Robert E. Lee, or the name change for John Tyler, or the name change for all of them, how is that going to improve the education of one student in TID school? I know my two of my children are students, are teachers here in Tyler. They constantly are complaining about they don't have the money to do this, they don't have the money for that, they would like to have more. I'm just concerned about the money and where it's going to. They also say that they would like to have a nice raise occasionally. I'm very concerned, like I said again, about the tax money. Has any kind of study been conducted on how much it will cost to change one name or to change all the school names? Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes the portion of our meeting that had headed to public comment. Thank you, audience, thank you, speakers, for the way...
Thank you, audience, thank you speakers, for the way you handled yourself and for the way you presented your opinions. Sometimes we have mass exodus. If y'all are going to stay for our side of the conversation, then we'll keep moving on. Took a recess the last time, I think we'll just go ahead and continue on. So Item 12, Business Legal Finance Consent Agenda. I have-- Item G. Are there any other items that we need to pull? Not, is there any discussion on the items that will not be pulled under Item 12?
Thank you. I know we will be considering pulling out of the meeting charter, and I just wanted to take this time to compliment Jan for the work she is doing against how we get to try to audit her and encourage her to keep doing the great work that she's doing and working with this way our superintendent, the board, and the administration.
Any other comments? Thank you, Jan. Then I'll accept a motion for items under number 12, except for Items B and G. Mr. Washman, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Crawford, Item B.
Item B, it's always my joy, my pleasure to celebrate when a community person, a community member adopts one of our programs, supplements their budget with items that they need. Tonight, we bring forth to you from Keith Miller, one of our local supporters of Tyler ISD, $7,500 towards the Tyler House of Fame. Is he here? Not here tonight.
Thank you, Danny Wayne. So then I can take a motion to approve Item B, except for that gift.
Mr. President, I move to approve item B, give some donations.
Second.
I'll second.
Dr. Nation, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item M.
Item M is kind of the first pre-project as far as kicks off, as far as our new construction building of both of our high schools, the rebuild of both high schools. This is the early site construction and demolition package for Robert E. Lee High School. As the public knows, we talked about the pond, we actually have to bury a creek that's over there. It's more like a drainage dish that comes off of the French Quarter, I believe. But in negotiating with the federal government, we were able to obtain the permission to actually build on our own land. And doing that was to actually, I think we paid a million dollars for those credits, didn't we, Mr. -- somewhere out there near that?
Pretty close to that.
Pretty close to that, okay. So we actually got permission to build our own land, and this is part of that project is actually to bury the creek and put a big giant culvert over the creek so that we can actually put parking lots over it. So the building actually will go over the old creek, parking lots will go. One last thing is, we'll also be bringing something to you in the near future, possibly next month, for some pre-construction demolition of John Tyler High School as well.
Just for clarifications, the amount listed in Item N does not include the what made credits that was in a previous purchase done over a year ago.
That's correct.
So this is just construction and demo expenses. No payments to the federal government here.
Correct.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments about Item M? If you hear none, I'll ask for a motion. We have three bottom end. Mr. Washman, the second section. Mr. Martinez, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So we suggest we pull a Table G. Mr. Hardy, do we need to take any other action? Do we need to vote on tabling G, or do--
Yeah.
Okay. And that brings us to Item 13, Curriculum Construction Consent Agenda. Item H, we will pull. Are there any other items to be pulled? Any discussion on these items other than Item H? Not, I'll accept a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve all items under Robert E. thirteen, except Item H.
Second.
I'll second.
Dr. Nation, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item H, Dr. Crawford.
Yes, bringing forth to you the actual clinical affiliation agreement with TJC for the nursing clinicals. We do have an adjustment to that contract. If you'll turn your agendas to page 81, which is actually the back page of the memorandum of understanding. That's page six. We need to make an adjustment to 3.14. That's the indemnification clause. The adjustment, the motion should be to approve the contract with the understanding that there will be an adjustment to 3.14 of the agreement that will reflect the extent as afforded to the Texas Constitution. I'm voting that. In other words, your attorneys will approve that so that the board president can sign that once it's adjusted. And leave our perfect Texas Constitution.
Any questions or comments about that item? If you hear none, I'll make a motion on Item H.
Mr. President, I move to approve Item H, inclusive of the indemnification clause.
Inclusive of it as changed by our council?
Is that what you mean?
Yes, okay. I have a second for that motion. Thank you, Dr. Mason. Second.
Aye.
Thank you, Dr. Nation, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 14, Superintendent Stafford's report.
Yeah, the quarterly investment report, you heard, you had a report from Dustin Treilitz on NBC, our financial advisor. Bond money has been received, and actually we started encumbering some of that, short or shortly, with the pre-construction project. So again, any questions about that or other investments, please contact Tasha or myself if you have one, or if you do have executive director, Mary Russell, here tonight, if you have any questions about it.
Any questions for Dr. Crawford? Moving to Item 15, two items to discuss. The first is the policy CW Local, which is the policy that governs naming, renaming, a lot of mine of the school building. So this is a little unusual for us in that we often don't have full discussions in kind of a very unscripted and free-flowing way on the dice. We're governed by the Texas Open Meetings Act, that governs what items can be discussed during the executive session in private, and what items can only be discussed in a public meeting. And so sometimes we've come to a meeting, having discussed things in executive sessions that are appropriate to discuss, and so we can be very efficient in the way we discuss things here. This is not one of those items generally. And so what you're about to witness, those of us who have lived in the country a while might recognize it as bacon sausage. It is sometimes messy. It is a little chaotic. But discussing this item in a public session, in a public forum, or in an open meeting, where everyone is given notice about it and knowing that we're going to discuss it, and hosting it, in this case, as just a discussion item. So if anybody reported or believes that this board is going to take action tonight on this policy, you have a ready agenda as close to that as I wish you would. So we are here to discuss it, and I'm going to introduce the topic by answering a couple of questions. Why should we discuss this issue? I've had people approach me and say we shouldn't even talk about it. The first response I had is that this is an issue of obvious interest in our community. I've only been on the board for a couple of years, but the two best-attended board meetings have been the board meetings where this is likely to be discussed. I can think of no other issue, including even our last bond issue, that has attracted this much community interest. So I think as your elected officials, we have a responsibility to discuss it. And as I mentioned previously, the Open Meetings Act prevents us from discussing this in private. Lastly, I'd say that I think it says something about the community that there is pressure to even discuss this issue. I think that says something about a community that is unwilling to face tough issues, and particularly issues of race. So what do I hope comes out of our session here? First is, as I've said during the public comment section, I hope and I believe that this board will model how a group of adults of different races, backgrounds, experiences, and perspectives can discuss this issue. I pray and I expect that we'll do it with respect and concern for each other, and to be united by our common faith, demonstrating commitment and concern for all of the students of Tyler ISD. I am just one of seven trustees. My vote counts no more, no less. And so the final reason that I included this item on the agenda is that I desperately want to hear from my fellow board members about how they feel about this issue. And rather than have a, what's called a rolling meeting, where I or another board member contacts each individual member that solicits their opinion, the proper way to do this is in a public forum, on a properly called meeting. So I'm going to ask a series of questions. The board members are free to address these issues. They're free to not address these issues. They're free to remain silent. But the issues that I hope we will discuss, at least apart tonight, is number one, do you believe this is something the board should even discuss? Second is, what, if any, impact does this have, this issue have, on student outcomes? We've identified student outcomes as the positive student outcomes, as the main job of this board, the main charge for the superintendent. So I think that's an important question that should be asked and answered. Number three, I'd like to hear your personal opinion on the issue of school naming here in Tyler. And finally, if we do decide to consider taking action at some point in the future, what process, if any, would you recommend we follow? So with that introduction, I'll open it up to my fellow board members.
So I'll start. I can talk a little bit about some of the questions that you asked. I think you opened very well. I think that I would take one step further and say that we have a responsibility to the community to move towards a vote. I think that's their expectation of us. I think that that's what they want us to do. I think that that's the only way that we can come to some kind of a solution. So I think whether we take some time for fact finding or research, or whatever you guys feel like you need to do, I think that ultimately that's the only way we get to your other question, which is how does it affect student achievement? I think it's, you know, obviously a huge distraction, and so I'm going to deal with this, not just in our meetings, but everywhere else we go. So we've done some really, really great work, and we're hopefully going to continue to do some really, really great work, and I get excited when I think about it. And so I think that we owe it to, we have a job to do, and we owe it to people that elected us to move forward and whatever that looks like after. I think that we take them one at a time, and we vote on one, and whether the result of that is to address the policy changes, then we address those at that time. I don't think that we put the card before the horse here, and I think that we show some leadership and move forward.
You said one at a time. What exactly are you referring to?
Well, it seems like all I've heard about is Robert E. Lee, so if you start there and let the community tell us, tell us what's next, and I'll follow you. That's how we start.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez.
I suppose the senior of the group, speaking right now. I first want to say how much I appreciate the fact that we have had citizens who were excited, they're excited, about presenting their side, their feelings. We've had emails, we've had phone calls. We even had letters. I had one left in my house on my behalf of today, although it was anonymous. It was loud, and I read it. So I've read everything that people have said. I've read the newspaper articles, but I need to go back down memory lane, and I hope this won't take long, but it might. I am a tolerant. I am a pride tolerant, but the history is not always pride. There are some areas that, if I could tell you when I was a student in Wisconsin, and when we played Robert E. Lee, we had to stand while the Dixie song was being sang. If I could tell you that made joy in our heart, it did not. But our principal told us we had to stand to be respectful. So we stood. To say that we don't know the history, we African-Americans, we do know the history. We were separate, and we were not equal, but we were intelligent black boys and girls, young ladies and young men. So we knew the history, but we also knew what we were having to face. And there were people in our community, black leaders, who prepared us in organizations because they knew the integration was coming. And so integration came, but I proudly graduated as a Missau Bulldog. There was a guy who's been writing the history lately. I found it very interesting. I often wondered where this north, south, east, west came from. And I know the history of the city, it was intentionally done that way. And I understand it was intentional that blacks were moved to North Tyler, so you had still a segregation. I can say tolerance has come a long way. I can really say that. And I'm proud of the fact that even we as board members from different walks of life can sit and discuss issues and items in an intelligent way. We may not always agree, but we know how to come to a conclusion that is best for our students. And to me, that's the main thing. In looking and listening to those even who have spoken here tonight, I remember the group of black elected officials, and each one of them had no, they were, let's just say they were excited by presenting their, sharing their thoughts. And they all came to the conclusion that actually both high school names should be changed. Because if you looked at the history, and there is, as everyone has said tonight, there is some negative history in each one of these gentlemen's lives. Do you change the school name? If you change one, I would say you change both. Do you go down to all of those schools? I don't, I'm not sure about that yet. And I don't think we ought to vote on it tonight. I think we need to continue to rationalize in our minds what others have said, and perhaps at a later day, decide if we want to vote on a name change. Now, I'll say this, regardless of what we do, somebody's going to be unhappy. It really bothers me to hear that you wouldn't vote on a bond to build a new school, when Robert E. Lee is a school in the worst shape in this city. Surely you would want a new Robert E. Lee High School, whatever the name will be. I would hope that's what people will see. What do we need to do best for our children? Can we put aside, I can put aside that I grew up in separate and unequal situations. We got the books of students from Robert E. Lee and John Tyler, and they even had lines to write our names on, but that can stop us from learning. So what do we do? Do we continue in the mold that we're in? Or do we, as the boys, stand up and say, this is what we feel is best, regardless-- the impact should be positive, let me say that. If the impact is not positive, it's because we adults are spreading negative venom to our children. Children, most children don't know hatred. It's things they hear-- It's things they hear at home and around other situations where adults are. So I hope whatever we do, we decide that this board is going to make a difference in the lives of students. If we decide the right thing to do, and it should be the right thing to do, we'll remain both high schools, and we'll move forward. How can we say we're going to pass him or gone? That's just beyond my imagination. I serve on the chamber, and I love the work the chamber does, I don't think you could beat it, it's wonderful. We're in the business of trying to invite other businesses to come in, into our city, and bring their children into our schools. But we want to have schools, materials, whatever's necessary, that our children might be educated at a high level, and they're able to compete wherever they go to college. Now, everything can be blamed on the schools. I need to go and just say what's on my mind. Everybody comes from some environment. We take a child where they are, and we do the very best that we can to prepare them to enter the higher educational level, and hopefully to be successful, productive students. And I say all that to say, board members make decisions some people are happy with and some they are not. But in the final analysis, we've got to search our own homes. Do we change both the schools' names? Well, I say you want to change one, but I change the other. Change the names. But what impact does that have on your SPM student outcomes? The impact comes when we who are in the classroom, the teachers, the board members, the school administration, decide that we're going to put the best interests of students at heart and do whatever's necessary for them to achieve. So I can't say the school name will make a difference, because with the student, they're just happy going to school where they go to school. It's the adults who enter this business of wanting to change the name. The schools, let me have a room walk down memory lane, full of all, everything, but I don't want to see, I'll just be ready, let's wrap a flag. But walk down memory lane, have you, you'd have whatever you want to have for people to connect to their history. This is not changing history, this is making a positive impact today. I know the history. We were taught it, and we were taught it well, even though it was during segregation times. So I say to you, I was able to compete with anyone else when I graduated. The question is, are we as a board going to decide tonight that we're going to do what we feel is right in the eyesight of all the children, regardless of where you went to school? My junior year, I thought they were going to close Miss Scott, and I was on my way to John Tyler. That's just the way it was. But I lived to be a Bulldog. But guess what? Y'all told John Tyler, I mean, Robert E. Lee, is still here? John Tyler's still here, Scott is gone. But Scott lives in your heart. You can't take Robert E. Lee out of someone's heart. You can't take John Tyler out of their heart. But we can start to do what's right, and we can make a positive impact. And I say, as the adults who were elected, let's make a positive impact. I'm not making any money off of this. This is a high-paying job we have sitting over here, and being all times of nights and all these days we have to meet. But we do it because we love children. So the challenge is for us, oh, we're going to stop now and do what we feel like is right at this time. No, I'm not doing a knee-jerk response to white supremacy. I lived through that stuff in the sixties and seventies. So it's not a knee-jerk reaction, but I think it's time that we look at what we're going to do. And so, listening to the folk in my district, but also everyone tonight, everybody's spoken in the newspaper, everybody on Facebook, yes, I feel like it is time for a change. And if we adults would look at it in the right way, the change would be positive. So hatred lurks in our heart, but if we're going to look at this in a positive way, that lurks in our heart too.
Thank you, Dr. Mason. Just for clarification, there's no vote, there's no action?
No.
Other board members care to try and follow? Are you brave ones, that?
All the subjects I've whether or not been able to discuss, we have to discuss it, because it's important to, it's important to allow people on both sides. And that's our talk to Jake, what's important to, to, to. We have to realize that our history is that, it's our history, and it can't be changed by sweeping under the rug. We have to grow from it, and the only way we can grow from it and learn from it is to remember it. I look back, and I'm a historian, that's my, that's my subject. And I look back at history, and I see terrible things that were done all over the world. But what we're concerned about is what's going on in our country and in our community. And we don't have to like everything that happened in the past, but the only way we can remember it, it's, I mean, the only way we can learn from it and go forward is to remember it. My opinion on the naming of the schools is as we go forward, when we have brand-new schools, not, not the redone John Tyler or Robert E. Lee, that bond is just, is for that, to rebuild John Tyler and Robert E. Lee. But when it comes down to brand-new schools, like we did with Thury Lux, and we have to come up with a new school, then a new name for our brand-new school, we need to think of some a little bit better names for them. And at this point, I think the names of the schools need to be left alone, and everybody needs to look to their hearts and not look to the name of the school or how they did before some of the people. We're, we're all in the same community, we all share in that history, and we need to take responsibility for it, but we also need to take the responsibility in the future too. And that's all I've got to say about that.
Trish, you have to say something.
I guess I'll go next. I'm one of the guys Fritz was referring to, didn't feel like it was appropriate time to be discussing this matter. I don't feel that it's an appropriate time to discuss this issue, as we've just begun school and have recently dedicated ourselves to the goal of focusing solely on student outcomes. So much that we've actually changed our vision and mission statement to read, we focus on successful student outcomes, that's it. I believe it's our duty as a board to keep our sights set on the things we've been committed to improving together over the last few years, and we've seen positive results due to our focus. This issue is one that is potentially highly emotional, whatever side you're on, and has the ability to provide this board, and more importantly, our community. I think the proper time to discuss this type of issue is, one, when school is not in session, and, two, when the issue is not so fresh, so as our judgment, won't be clouded by emotion. I'm going to go off cuff here, and, you know, when Ashley and I have an argument, usually you will take some time, step back, address it a few days later, you know, when we've kind of cooled off. So I think by limiting our discussion of this issue to months when school is not, I'm sorry, by limiting our discussion of this issue to months when school is not in session, we'd be maintaining our focus on teaching and learning during the school months, and would only be postponing discussion for a fraction of the time that these schools have been in existence. Nine more months will at the very minimum give us time to hear more from our constituents who elected us. I believe the only thing we've done by putting this on the agenda so soon is swatted a hornet's nest and given the news something to report on and improve their ratings with, therefore tearing our focus away from student outcomes and turning it towards a national narrative filled with angst and discontent. This has not been the style of our board in the last few years. We have not been a group that has allowed outside forces to control our actions, reacting to the whimsical and divisive nature of the modern news cycle. We need to own this issue and deal with it in a way that's not reactionary. We have a unique and awesome responsibility to keep peace amongst our community, and I implore this board to act in a cruel, calm, and collective manner. And I also implore this community to give us time and to respect our focus during the school year on successful student outcomes.
Thank you, Wayne. Did you, Bert Feld, if you cared, want to make some part?
I guess so. Let me just say to all the people who've come to the meetings the last two months, I personally, and I think I can speak for everyone, we've heard you, we've listened, we've thought about it, we've gone to bed thinking about it, we've woken up thinking about it. It's not an issue that we take lightly at all. We all want to do the right thing, that's what everyone up here wants to do. And we all come from different life experiences, and to put a group of seven together from all parts of the community, and they're all conscientious about doing the right thing, just know that we, we hear you, and that we don't take this lightly. I did write down some thoughts. It's interesting, we sit here today to talk about this, but I've known this was going to be a topic of conversation for at least two and a half years. After the Bible study shooting in Charleston and what transpired with that, there's no doubt of the, that we were going to be here. So that's a good thing. I'm not shocked. I've read, it's amazing how much I've read now about Robert E. Lee, about the Civil War, about everything that has to do with any of that. And unlike most people, I don't mind being here tonight. I graduated from Lee in 1988. I can't tell you that it wasn't without some teenage moments, but overall, I couldn't have had a better high school experience. There was far less racial tension in 1988 than there is now. And I personally hate those determined to divide us for a political gain. I have said many times, we need to get over our obsession with race. I was able to go on to SMU College, where I graduated with a BA in history and a minor in geology. My junior seminar paper was on the cause of the Civil War. Since that time, I've read dozens of books on the Civil War, Robert E. Lee, from every different perspective. One thing that I think was important over the last two and a half years that I had to work out in my head is, what is the context of the issue before us? What are we, what are we really talking about here? Let me first say that anyone who has genuinely and thoroughly studied the life of Robert E. Lee will tell you that he was a man of impeccable character, known for his honesty, integrity, and kindness, widely thought of as one of the most effective generals in American history. In theory, he opposed slavery, once calling it immoral and political evil in any country. He opposed Southern secession, calling it silly and a rash Revolutionary Act. To me, it's careful that we not commit ourselves to historical revisionism or presentism, an act in which we judge historical figures by today's standards. It's not genuine for most of us to say that we would have done it this way if we'd been in someone else's shoes 156 years ago. I believe Robert E. Lee was a much finer man than I will ever be, and certainly based on his character, worthy of having a school named after him. But I'm not sure that's the end of the issue. There are some that will argue that the Civil War had nothing to do with slavery, that it was over tariffs, states' rights, or economic differences. This is an issue in which honest men can disagree, but in my opinion, either directly or indirectly, preservation of the institution of slavery was a factor in the South's decision to secede. So as we move forward to 2017, one question we may want to consider is this: In a situation of compulsory education, in which by law you must attend the high school that you are zoned to regardless of race, is it right to force African-American students to attend a school named after the most famous and honored Confederate figure from a war whose underlying cause either correctly or indirectly was to protect the institution of slavery? To me, that carries more weight than attacking Robert E. Lee the person or trying to judge the actions of individuals 16 decades ago. One thing I would hate to do, though, through all of this, is throw away 59 years of history, memories, and tradition that had nothing to do with the Civil War or the man Robert E. Lee. I've talked with and heard from thousands of former students who don't want their entire high school identity lost over a man's name. And no offense to our diehard Robert E. Lee, the man supporters, but most people I've talked to under the age of 55 don't think of the man when they think of the high school. They think of the school itself, Tyler Lee, and the happy times shared by people of all races in those halls, on those fields, and in those classrooms. As we go through this process, the timing of it is not as important to me. I can understand exactly what Wade's saying, it's not good to make decisions when emotions are high, but as I've said, I've thought about this for several years now, so if we deal with it now or later, whatever the board decides, I'm comfortable with. I have, have one alternative that people have talked to me about, and it is, is there a way to salvage the pride of Tyler Lee while still having an effect that it's not named after Robert E. Lee? I think that's something that we can look at as we explore our options moving forward. Tyler Lee, in essence, is its own school with 60 years of history now. And finally, Reverend Hager, since you asked, other than us taking a lot of time at board meetings, which, that's fine, I don't see it having an effect on student outcomes. These are adult-related outcomes. The students that I talk to and that I know, unless they're third eye adults, they're not really worried about the name. Our society has much bigger issues that affect kids on an everyday basis, like the collapse of the traditional family with a mother and a father, moral decay, lack of personal accountability, and lack of respect for authority. And then also, the Robert E. Lee issue to me is unique. I'm completely against digging up history on every person the school is named after at T.I.S.D., and us being the judge of their lives hundreds of years ago. To me, that would be a huge waste of time for this board and administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bergfeld. That sounded as if you had spent two and a half years preparing. I appreciate that.
Got some thoughts I'll share as well. Unlike you, Mr. Bergfeld, I was a reluctant participant in this. I had, like you, seen this issue coming, but had hoped that somehow, some way, it would move past this or around this. And I agree with Mr. Washington, there are many more issues that are more important and that I wish drew a fraction of the community interest. So today, despite all of the improvements in Tyler ISD, we have a 28-point achievement gap between African-Americans and white students. That is an issue that we've been working on. That is an issue that has profound implications for those students for a lifetime. And that is not a new problem in Tyler ISD, it's an old problem that many leaders have tried to address, yet it does not draw a fraction of the interest in our community as something like this issue does. So it raises the question in my mind of why we don't have 400 people and now 50-something public comments about that issue. In fact, I can think of maybe only one or two of the two years that I've been on the board that even touched on it. I was suspicious- I was suspicious of the motives of some who initially raised this issue, and I was suspicious of the timing. And my knee-jerk reaction was that this was another example of political correctness running up. It was a media-driven story. If our president was here tonight, he'd call it fake news. On an emotional level, I too loved my high school. I loved my time at Robert E. Lee. And like many of my classmates who've responded emotionally to this, it is based off of the great affection that I have for that school, and for the teachers, and for the students, and the friends that I made there. So I love my school. I love the fact that one of my kids has graduated from that same school with that same name, and Lord willing, the second one will graduate this year. We can all hope. But as I dug into the issue, and like Mr. Burkhild said, read as much as I could read, I had the privilege of attending, of learning history at the same school that Robert E. Lee learned history, and dug up some of those old resources. And I agree with Mr. Burkhild, as he has said, that slavery was a direct or indirect cause of the Civil War, and I'd go maybe even one step further, that the state right that people were most exercised about was indeed the right to determine whether or not they would hold slaves. And the economic issue they were most concerned about was the economic system that slavery But I think there's a difference between statues, streets, city names, and schools. And you alluded to it, Mr. Burkhild, we compel students to attend a certain school. Not only do they attend it, if they participate in extracurricular activities, they wear that name on their chest, or per chest. They identify, they're forced to identify with that school in a way that is different than when I drive down a street, or look at a statue in a park, or drive through a city and see a name. And I think that's one of the reasons why there's so much interest and emotion around this issue, is because we, particularly those of us who've grown up in this community and who've gone to Robert E. Lee, we identify at an emotional level with what that school means to us. One of the stories that I read in all of this research was that of a man named Mike Williams. He was the Commissioner of Education before current Commissioner. He was, I believe, Land Commissioner of Texas or Railroad Commissioner, some other elected official, before becoming the Commissioner of Education. And he graduated from Robert E. Lee High School in Niblet. And he's an African-American man, he played football. And as I read his account of what it felt like to run underneath the flag onto the football field, the Confederate flag, as he stood there while the band played Dixie, and the crowd sang, "I wish I were back in the land of cotton," I realized what we ask students to do in terms of identifying with the name of the school. And Reverend Mason, you alluded to that as well, on the opposing side of the field, what we ask students to endure or ask them to identify with. And so that's when I began to think back to, not my history classes, but my seminary So in seminary, we have this class called hermeneutics, which is a very fancy word for, which you need lots of fancy words in seminary. It's a fancy word to describe how do you know what things mean? And specifically, in the context of seminary, how do you know what something means when it was written in another language, in another time, to another culture, to a world that we really struggle to understand? And the fundamental principle there that applied there, and I think applies here, and again, Mr. Burkhild, you alluded to it, is that context determines meaning. And so to that, I would say, the name Robert E. Lee meant something in 1848 at the end of the Mexican-American War. It meant something different in 1860, as he wrapped up his federal service. It meant something different in 1865, at the end of the Civil War. And after he spent the last years of his life encouraging reconciliation, his name meant something different in 1870. But something happened over the next few decades, and then Robert E. Lee became the face of the Confederacy. Not its president, Jefferson Davis, who most of us could not pick him out of the lineup. We think of Robert E. Lee as the name, the face, symbol, the leading symbol of Confederacy. In the same way, the flag that most of us think of as the Confederate flag was never the official national flag of the Confederate States. It was the battle flag of the Army of Northern Virginia, the army that Lee commanded. So with the passage of time, the symbols and the names lost some of the detail or nuance of their original meaning, and his name came to be synonymous with the Confederacy. Roll the clock forward then into the 1950s. 1954, you have Brown versus the Board of Education, and a mandate to integrate schools, abolishing the facade of separate but equal school systems. In Tyler, the response to that decision has been reported on thoroughly here recently in both Tyler paper and other outlets as well. It's not a matter of opinion, it happens to be a matter of legal record, that Tyler, at seemingly every turn, resisted integration. For those who say we should not forget our history, I would say that the history of 50 years ago is more important than the history of 150 years ago. Like other communities in the South, there was a strong and immediate negative reaction to the prospect. And again, as Mr. Burkhild said, I don't judge those folks, I don't know how I would have responded had I lived in those times. But what I do know, looking back through history, is out of that ugly stew came the decision to name this new school, one farthest from the white neighborhoods that would be predominantly white, after a man with no real connection to our city, no personal contribution to Tyler or its schools, and one who had become known as the face of the Confederacy. Robert E. Lee, the face of resisting integration, had a new meaning in 1957. Then later, we as a community doubled down to make no mistake what was meant by that, we chose the Rebels as the mascot, draped the school in the Confederate battle flag, we brought in a cannon, and then watched as the school was plagued with racial unrest. Until we were ordered by a court to integrate and to dismantle the separate and unequal school system that we fought so hard to maintain, and then finally forced to remove the Confederate symbols from the school, in attempt, I believe, to take some of the Confederateness out of the school name. My opinion, that is the history of Robert E. Lee that is most relevant for our discussion tonight, not the nuances and complexities of a man who lived and died 150 years ago. When I graduated from Lee in 1985, Robert E. Lee was not identified with the man. It was the names and faces of teachers and coaches and students. It was Billy Hall, even though Billy still doesn't remember who I am. It was Coach Pickle. It was friends. It didn't mean a Confederate general. So I understand when people are upset about this issue. Because, and I think one of the reasons that you see this dividing line between folks who grew up in this community and those who did not, is absent another meaning, absent a meaning that is filled with names and faces of people you love and respect. You're left only with the historical meaning. And so it's no surprise to me that people who've grown up in this community, who've gone to that school, who've loved that school, resist the effort. There is real loss in giving up that name. So I empathize with it, and I feel it. You know, those Confederate symbols, even though they were still in the background when I was a student in the 80s, they really faded here until recently, until the groups we would not want to associate with in any way reclaimed those symbols. You know, Nazis, the Whites, the Premises, the Klan, it brought them to us, who were familiar with them, and introduced them to a new generation, which is why the name Robert E. Lee is a risky name for a school. It's a name that is all too easy to reassociate with the meaning associated with those symbols that we banned a long time ago. Which is why I'm personally open to changing the name of the school I graduated from, and my child, my oldest son, has graduated from. And we have a unique opportunity with opening to essentially new schools, to look to the future instead of the past, to move forward with, in some ways, very little economic impact. Dr. Prosser, I don't know if you care to wade into this discussion, or if you want to at a future date. My understanding of the construction process is that most of the cost associated with the name change, the significant cost, if we ever think of buildings and signage and those things as the most significant items, those are things that are going to be replaced in this construction process. And if we were to decide to change the name of the school, the most cost-effective time to do it would actually be in conjunction with the construction process. As one of the speakers mentioned, I had the opportunity to serve with the Texas State Guard, the Texas National Guard during the response to Hurricane Harvey and the devastation that it brought to Texas. I saw an experience much that I never dreamed I would over the last three weeks. Here's the most amazing part of that experience. Folks turned off the TV, stopped listening to all the things we're supposed to be mad about, all the issues that drive us apart. We tuned out those voices and focused on what's important, and started helping our neighbors. It turned a disaster zone into a work of grace. It cut across racial lines, economic lines, social lines, religious lines, and it was beautiful. So I say that to say that I know it is possible to see that kind of unity in the midst of controversy. I know it's possible, and it might be fleeting, but it is possible. It's my prayer that what we experience here in our city is exactly that, that as we look to the future, whatever path I choose to take, that it would be a work of grace. So I don't know how that leaves us in terms of how to move forward. I've heard, generally, in terms of how you feel. I can tell you that any process moving forward, the values that I would hold would be openness, number one. This would be a decision made in a transparent way to the public. There are those who've asked me, gosh, why can't we just put this to a vote? Which I had two responses to. The first is fairly simple, lawyers have told us we don't have the legal authority to put an issue like this into vote. The second is-
As in the voting of public, not as a board?
Oh, no, of course, the board could act. We could not hold an election for the community to vote on what they want these schools to be named. We don't have the legal authority to do that. The second is, particularly for those who claim to uphold a respect for history, the history of the majority protecting the minority rights is one that is usually not solved in an election. It's usually found first in court. And so even if we did have the ability to call an election, I don't think that would be the right way to handle this issue. Other values, Mr. Washington, I agree with you, deliberateness. We have time to deal with this issue. We have time to gather input. We have time to listen to the community, to listen to the best arguments on each side. We have time in terms of the construction process. We're not at a point where we have to make decisions on the name of the school that would be impacted by the construction process. My concern with timing the process is also related to the issue of distraction. So I share your concern that we would not be distracted from our main job of student achievement. This meeting is an example, other than a full 30-minute spin of the covenant, we were able to accomplish everything that was put before us in the area of student achievement in this meeting. I think it was the case in our prior meeting as well. So I think it is possible for this board to maintain its focus on student achievement. I think it's also possible for this superintendent, because I see this principally as a board issue, not one that requires significant staff and superintendent focus on, that would risk his focus on student achievement.
So I'm gonna just interject real quick and say that the buildup to this meeting, for me personally as a board member, my focus was completely distracted, and that's on me. But, I mean, I'm hoping the public can understand that the phone calls that we get are about this stuff and not about school issues. Our focus, I mean, we are human. It is not on item agenda 10C, you know? That's something we get here, and we might do an agenda review, and as far as Marty goes, and the poll staff, and the community, I do feel like this is an issue that does shift our focus from student outcomes every time we put it on the agenda. Every single time leading up to the meeting, of course, we can go through our agenda, and we can say, yeah, items A through K, with the exception of, you know, C, let's get it done. I mean, that's easy. Of course, we can go through promotions, and maybe somebody talks for 15 or 20 minutes at the public participation. What I'm talking about is day-to-day operations of the school district. Marty dealing with whatever you deal with, which is oftentimes not the business of the school. You're getting tugged in a lot of different political directions. And I will say this, I know that the naming of our schools four years ago, when we interviewed candidates, did not once come up in an interview. And I can probably say that in any of our elections, the naming of the schools was not an issue on the ballot, it was all about student outcomes. And so I do feel like that this does have the ability to distract us, and I feel like there's danger in being reactive. And I feel like by knee-jerk reacting, we're allowing motivated people to believe that they can manufacture an event in order to influence us or produce their desired result. And we have to be aware of this and act in a manner which is above the fray. All I'm asking for from members on this board, who I have most respect and admiration for, is to table this discussion, and possible action, whatever, until next summer. We all know that with the new schools on the horizon, that it wouldn't be fiscally responsible to make any sort of change before the new campuses are built. We have time, and our constituents deserve time to communicate with us on this issue. Our staff deserves our full support and attention during the school year, so that we can address their educational concerns and endeavors, so that our students can achieve their highest potential. Our one employee, superintendent of schools, deserves a board that keeps her focus on student outcomes during the school year. We've made monumental strides since Marty's arrival, and addressing the issue when school is in session, in my opinion, only provides more stress and a distraction from teaching and learning. When we interviewed several candidates, like I said- When we interviewed several candidates, like I said, this was not an issue that we spoke about. And I feared that this issue, if handled incorrectly, I'm not saying the issue in and of itself, but if we handle it in a manner that keeps things stirred up, this has the ability to make the job of superintendent so unattractive in our district that we might lose one of the best we've had due to our unwise and untimed behavior. And finally, our students deserve the luxury of going to school without this as a distraction that will only take away from their high school experience and their educational outcomes. I wholeheartedly disagree with the notion of taking kids' attention and focus out of the classroom and inserting it into focus groups regarding this issue during school hours. Please, let's keep our focus on teaching and learning during the school year and take this issue up at the proper time when school is not in session. That's my only request, and I feel like it would be wise to do so.
I would hope that we adults would even be proposing that to our students.
What's that?
I would hope we wouldn't talk about a name change. I really would hope the parents would not, the teachers would not, the administration would not, to the students. I really hope you wouldn't, because their primary focus should be on their academic achievement and graduating at the end of the year commensurate at a level with a record ready for college. The one thing I would challenge us with, how many of you remember when we started this discussion about the DSA quarter and putting our minds together and focusing on coming out from under that quarter? Who had to step up and start the discussion, Oretia? Even though I've known for years that the only way, this is the truth, the only reason and the only way we got some things done for the African-American children, Hispanic children in Tyler was because we won the court order. I'm thinking about that. Why do we need the federal government to tell us what to do in our schools when we have intelligent minds who were elected, intelligent administrators who are serving? Why, if I had to say it, we don't need the government to tell us what to do, because we ought to be able to come together and reason with one another and decide it's just the best thing to do. It took some time, but all of y'all looked at me and I stepped up to the plate because I agree, it's time. It's time for that change to take place. I'm just asking us, and I agree, we need to take time. I want to hear from everybody since we talked, I'm sure we had a lot of discussion after tonight, but I want to listen to see what others have to say, since we have held a lot of discussions. But I can say to the board members that I've talked to Marty twice today, and it all had to do with academic achievement, had nothing to do with the name of the school. As a matter of fact, I talked to him twice and texted twice because I had some questions about the plans. So I'm not gonna be sidetracked. I'm not gonna allow the community, anybody else, to sidetrack me from our primary focus, and that is academic achievement of our students. And we have to resolve within ourselves that that's what we're gonna do, even though this is an issue. And I know folks say it's gonna be hard to do. It won't be hard for me, because I'm gonna see children graduate on time and enter college or in the workforce. So I hope that we will remain focused on academic achievement, where I really hope we do. And I don't wanna see us rushing to it, and I don't. Matter of fact, I think we need to take the time, but sooner or later, all of us are gonna have to decide what it is, and I think we just have to reason together. And like we've done on several issues, we can respect each other and disagree at the same time. This is gonna cause division on the board that we on the board have to overcome.
So I'm gonna agree with Reverend Mason. I think that we do need some time. I think we need to hesitate on taking that much time, because some of us are, have an election cycle between then, and when you have single issues that come up like this, then you have the potential for people that are not committed to improving student achievement become interested in what's going on up here. And I think that, at least we know, those of us that are sitting up here, that we all are committed to student achievement. And I think that we are all prepared to make that commitment, no matter what it takes, as far as time from us, either away from, you know, other stuff that we have going on. But I think that all of us, because we've committed to that, are fully committed to it. The other thing I will say is that I think we have a huge opportunity here to kind of test the waters on race relations in the city. I mean, we can work together here as a group and show everyone, hey, it's possible, we can all get along, we can all move forward. I think that the opportunity here is bigger than just us sitting here. I think it's something Tyler can look at as an example and say, hey, those guys can do it, and those guys can look at it and do what's right and put students first. I mean, we've proven it time to time and time again, and I think that we're on this path to where, we're almost there, guys, let's do it, and come together and, you know, this is a great board. We've done a lot of great work together. I'm proud of the stuff we're doing. I'm proud of my kids, go to TXD, we can do it.
Let me just say one more thing to clarify something that I see only in my head, yes, but I thought this would be a time to discuss it, because we need to. I was more referring to this meeting discussing the things that have been brought up right now. I did not mean to spend a lot of time on it in the days, you know, that may get things following. I think that we need to postpone any type of decision that we may make on it until we have plenty of input.
I think it's an important topic here, and when you discuss race relations, and, you know, it's really, really hard to sit up here in front of you guys and how many are watching online to talk, you know, about race and these issues, you know? But I will say this, and I know everybody on this board, and I know how you guys raise your kids, and I've raised your kids, and that is where it starts. You know, my grandpa was raised a little different than me, and I was raised a little different than my dad, and all that stuff. But, you know, and I can say this, I'm raising my son and daughter differently, probably when I was raised than when I was raised. And it's about good parenting, you know what I mean? And regardless of what the names of our high schools are, I mean, I've lived here, you know, all my life, graduated from Lee. You know, it would not have made an impact on what I teach my kids about love and respect for other people, you know? And, you know, I really do think if you take any, if somebody takes anything away from this meeting, it's maybe to look at our actions and how we're raising our kids, you know? Because we see it every day in public ed. Man, we're hurting on the father's front, I guarantee you. We need good dads. And, you know, the name daddy matters a lot more to me than, now, I'm just going off, the name daddy matters a lot more to me than the name of one of our high schools. I think that is the most impactful thing that we can do for our kids to raise a pride. So I do believe we have a chance to set an example to some extent, but I also think that, you know, that that starts in the home, and I hope that for Tyler, and I hope that for Tyler as well.
Anybody else have anything that they'd like to add? Okay, then we'll move on, so.
I said anybody.
Anybody? I don't really wanna contribute too much. So we're all agreeing in here that set this meeting in online, and we're not going to email the superintendent's office about this issue. Is that right, Gina? Are you okay with that? Phone calls too, right? Okay. Thank you all for your discussion tonight. Let's get on to some more business. Thank you. Okay. The next item is item B, the Bond Oversight Committee Facilities Update. So back on to, back on schedule, and we have with us tonight Tim Loper, our Director of Facilities. He's gonna come up here to the podium and kind of get us introduced, or actually, to the table, podium? You're gonna come to the podium.
Yes, sir.
Brady and Shree will actually probably get an opportunity here just a minute.
Correct.
Your staff, okay. We're gonna turn over here to give us a Bond Oversight Committee overview, and then also the facility, Mr. Loper.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Crawford, Reverend Fritz Hager, Washman, and fellow board members. I guess it is time, I think in your package you have Bond Oversight Committee rules and kind of regulations and all that, so it's time for us to go ahead and get that committee. Because meanwhile, we've been designing schools and getting a lot done. As you can see, we have one of the items that Dr. Crawford mentioned only for agenda, so we're kind to get, start spending money. We're glad to hear that we're now receiving one hundred ninety-eight million dollars, as we heard earlier, so money's in the bank, we can start work. Not to say that we haven't. So I guess the next order of business would be that each one of you select a respective member from your district and get those names to us, to me, who'll like contact, will get all the information, will organize the meetings, and we basically meet quarterly. I know that President Reverend Fritz Hager was on one of our committees before, and actually the spokesperson in one of our committees. So if we could do that, what's the deadline, a good deadline?
We have a special call meeting on September twenty-sixth. Just provide that by that date. That meeting will actually have one business item, our stop-loss interest that we tabled tonight, and then we also have the actual thematic designs of both campuses that will be presented here. There'll be renderings and other exotic types of things that go along with that phase of the actual process. If you guys will provide that to us before that date or on that date, we'll actually do that. There is not an action item that we associate with that, that's not what we have done in the past.
That's clear.
You've provided the list of names, one representative from your single area of history that you feel is qualified based upon these criteria on this list to be a member of the Bond Oversight Committee.
And also, if, I'm assuming that you were gonna contact these people first, but if they have a code name or something, do you make one of those an alternative also?
So board members, I would just draw your attention to the criteria outlining the ideal candidates. They should be representative of our community, they should have a working knowledge of budgeting and accounting and experience with determining and analyzing financial statements, I should preface that with, some members shall have. And then the next criteria, some members shall have a working knowledge of construction, architecture, design, or engineering. So this is, this is a group of people that are meant to add value to the process, to provide extra eyes and ears for the board and as a result, the community. It takes expertise to be able to track projects of this scope and complexity.
And accountability.
Any questions about the Bond Oversight Committee? Thank you, Mr. Loper.
Okay. Facility update. This is a great time to introduce a couple of really fine individuals. We, because I know all of you think that I can build these high schools by myself, I have to admit that I can't. But we've had the opportunity to interview several modern days for project management, and the structure of this is that I have two individuals that we have hired and are welcome at Tyler I School. And they're basically going to help with not only bare-bond specifications, quality control, accountability with the contractors, mitigation of staff, safety of children, and just a whole other set of eyes that we need on this, on these projects, which are massive projects. I was able to find a couple of fine individuals, and I have the structures where all three involved in both projects as a team, then I have, we have assigned one lead person that the staff will contact at each campus, okay? So first of all, I wanna just tell you a little bit about Ms. Cherie Jones. Probably, if she'll come on up to the table and even Brady. So Cherie Jones is a construction project manager for Robert E. Lee. She has two bachelor's degrees from Texas A&amp;M University. One of them is in architectural and environmental design, the other one is in construction science, and also a master's degree in business from the University of Athens. Ms. Jones comes to Tyler I School from Syntex Home, a big, large home, well, national home builders, where she was doing project management for eight years, and just recently has been teaching the construction management classes for the last five-plus years at UT Tyler. She's a graduate, East Texas girl from West Russ, and she resides in Oakville. Her husband, she resides with her husband and two children, a son and a daughter. I'm gonna say this about her, she's not expecting this, she may kill me later, I'm getting older, so just yesterday I did find out she's also an accomplished author. So she has a book called The Inner Voice of God Is Calling You, and just for applause, at MartinandOwes.com. Second of all, we have Mr. Brady Beddenfield. Mr. Brady is a project manager, he's our lead person at John Tyler. He's received a bachelor's degree in engineering technology from Texas State University. He is working on his master's degree and hopes to have that completed in the spring of twenty eighteen through UT Tyler Business Administration. Mr. Beddenfield comes to us from Tyler, from our ALM Construction out of Longview, and has been involved for the past several years in school projects. But prior to that, he worked all over the inner country, doing this construction projects for a huge company for mass transit called Archer that's out in Dallas, Florida. He's a graduate, other East Texas dude from Franklin High School, and Mr. Beddenfield resides in Tyler with his rock and two beautiful daughters. So having said that, Ms. Jones is gonna give us a brief update at Robert E. Lee, and then follow-up is with Beddenfield and John Tyler.
Well, good evening. First, I just want to thank you for having me today. Other side of that, I just want to really just thank you for giving me the opportunity to represent Tyler in the school district as a construction project manager for the facilities department. Since I've been here, I have just been welcomed with open arms, and it's really been helpful for me in order to do my job in a efficient and effective manner, so just wanted to thank you. To give you a little bit of an update on Robert E. Lee's status, you may have noticed in July and August, we started a demo with Tyler Tennis and Swim, and we finished that first part of September. Dr. Crawford was talking about Phase One B package, which is more civil. We closed on that bid August twenty-ninth. And as he was stating, that includes the extension of Red Raider Drive, clearing, rubbing, paving, and curb and gutter for pork and lot. It also includes installation of storm sewer, installation of the five-by-ten box cover, and also installation of condo for utilities. This past weekend, we did a basement for the old fieldhouse, and the time period we're working on at Tyler Tennis and Swim, we have been doing preparation to make sure we remove anything that needed to be removed from the old fieldhouse, and this is in preparation for demo as well. Our plans going forward is we plan on issuing GMP that will be for January, and we're hoping to get started building construction for February twenty eighteen. And this pretty much concludes where we're at so far with the stats of Robert E. Lee. But outside of that, I wanted to just also say that I'm gonna do everything I can, and my team members as well, and we're gonna do everything that we can to make sure that this is gonna be a safe, warm environment, a safe environment for the students, the staff, as well as the people that are working on the job site and in the community. Thank you.
So G and P board, in case you haven't been to the construction project-
So GMP board, in case you haven't been to the construction project, it's guaranteed maximum promise that'll be brought to you, as well as any other ones. So thank you, Ms. Jones, appreciate that. Mr. Beddington?
Evening, board, Dr. Crawford. Again, to echo Ms. Jones, I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm looking forward to constructing some schools, and I'm excited to get this rolling. I'm thinking for some construction, so. So some, some highlights on John Tyler is what we've accomplished today. The design team has developed schematic floor plans and some elevations that will be presented to the board in near future, the special board meeting like Dr. Crawford mentioned. We're currently developing an early demolition package. If, if you're familiar with John Tyler, there is a science lab wing on the front of the building. We're making preparations right now to evacuate those areas and have a bid package out to the public to accept bids and provide pricing for the demolition of that science lab wing, which is actually gonna be where our new two-story building goes. We should have that ready for your review in October. We're in, in preparation for that, we've actually moved the science teaching out of those labs, providing, providing boxes to box up all our equipment, and we've made some movements around the campus in order to accommodate those relocated classrooms, including moving a portable from Robert E. Lee over to John Tyler for some swimming space and those sort of things. I guess the next step as far as campus administration goes is we're, we're providing them with some information to make a decision on construction site fencing and laydown area, as well as phasing, a presentation on how we're going to phase the project, if you're familiar with how, how this job is gonna go. It's, there's gonna be a lot of phases and a lot of moving parts and pieces that we're all gonna have to work together to accomplish. So it's gonna be a challenge, but we're all up to completing it. So again, I appreciate being able to provide you guys with that update.
So Mr. Beddington, just for the public and for the board, we've kind of said 15, 16 phases at John Tyler. What are we down to right now?
Twelve, I'm hoping.
Okay, so we're making progress. Then phases being where we actually move those puzzle pieces around as we work feverishly to complete a wing or, or new construction. So it's been exciting. They have to deal with the superintendent coming by their office and going, hey, what if we get this? Well, the time is, the clock is ticking on that, because we're getting really close to locking those designs in and not being able to make those adjustments. So we're close, so close that we have an October 26th ground break, ground breaking, 9:00 AM with John Tyler, 11:00 AM with it. So again, October 26th, community, those are gonna be exciting.
So we had space in John Tyler, the Blue Notes Classroom, down to somewhere.
Portable space, we also have some interior space as well. So we had some, some, I don't know, kind of back there with the home acc core.
Core areas, yes.
Teacher core area isn't even back there where home acc was, and then a huge double live portable that we had not been using at the other high schools. So we've been able to effectively continue on with construction without disruption to the minimum.
And we did get those areas ready prior to school start.
So the equipment is there and everything that we need.
Yes, ma'am. Consulted the instructional specialists with the Curriculum Instruction Department as far as science goes, and making sure we're able to get those lab hour requirements when we can. And there might be some movement in and out of the building as far as contracting with the lab, you know, some luxuries that we do have as far as teachers owning labs, that's getting few and far between and unheard of in school districts anymore. So more of a college atmosphere to where you actually had your instruction in the classroom, and they made a contract in that lab. There's a lot of, of innovations gonna go on during this on both campuses, so appreciate y'all's work on that.
Any other questions or comments related to facilities?
Any more hornets over at Hawk?
I think we got them.
Beautiful.
All right.
Beautiful.
All right.